Well, thank you all for coming back after lunch. I know this is the hardest session of the day because you're all a little sleepy after eating, but we hope this will be a really good panel. So the the subject of our panel is parental rights, and there's a whole lot we could talk about, but kind of the big issue that's happening nationally around the country relates to names, pronouns, and gender transitions at school. So we're really going to focus exclusively on that topic and how it relates to parental rights, and we're really going to dig deep into that and give you sort of a lot of the different aspects of that that you need to know and hopefully will help you as as this issue comes up in your school district. So I'm going to briefly introduce our panelists. I'm not going to read their full bios because you have those in your packets, and I think you want to hear what they say more than you want to hear their full bio. So I'll just briefly, Nikki Neely is the president and founder of Parents Defending Education. This is a national membership organization that gives parents resources, it's litigated cases, it does a lot in this space, and she's also done a lot of fabulous other things that you can read about in the bio, but she's a very zealous advocate for parental rights nationally. Dr. Erica Anderson is a clinical psychologist, used to practice in Berkeley, but recently moved back to the Midwest in Minnesota. She was on the board of WPATH and the president of US Path for a number of years and is actually one of the world's leading experts, I think, on gender dysphoria. So we are really privileged to have her here with us and to have her expertise. And finally, Tammy Fournier is our client in a case that we won, thankfully. It was a groundbreaking case for parental rights, and given what happened to her in the case, she's become a very fierce advocate for parental rights, so you're going to hear a little bit about her story. So I'm really excited for this panel. Let's give them a welcome and a thanks for all of them being here. So Nikki, why don't you just start us off, sort of set the stage for us? What is the issue related to names, pronouns, and gender transitions, and how does it how does it relate to parental rights?
Sure. So first, I'm sure this is something that most of you are loosely familiar with. Under the guise of inclusivity, districts are, have been adopting policies governing the use of preferred names and pronouns, most frequently through bullying and harassment codes. And this is often then at the back end tied to student codes of conduct, which means that violations of these codes then can be subject to punishment up to and including expulsion. The justification for this is we see districts across the country citing Title IX and the Biden administration's forthcoming rule. We'll get more into Title IX in a little bit, but you know, a lot of districts are being told by their legal counsel or by the state that they must adopt these because of Title IX, or in certain instances, state human rights law. Like in Iowa recently, a district that we had sued, Linmar Community Schools, cited Iowa State Human Rights Law. The counter for this is, as the panel was talking about racial discrimination talked discussed earlier, compelled speech. You are forcing someone to say things that they may not believe in. Is a taxpayer-funded public school system entitled to real estate in a student or teacher's mouth in their head? And then kind of the slightly farther afield is the social transition aspect of this. So as of today, my organization, Parents Defending Education, has identified 1,060 school districts across the country that maintains what we call parental exclusion policies. This impacts 18,642 schools and over 10.8 million children. These policies have been adopted, most frequently by school boards. They have been voted through by duly elected school board, that says that parents do not have a right to know their child's gender identity. This is, again, done under the guise of safety. Schools will often maintain two separate sets of records with the child's new name, child's new pronoun, how the child presents at school. We also see this manifesting in the classroom because teachers then will ask teach us students at the beginning of the school year, what name, what pronoun can I, should I use in class? What should I use when I call home to speak to your family? Some states, like in California, have mandated that these policies exist, and so every district in the state must have these on the books. Well, in other places, and this is, this is, again, not just like a blue state, red state thing. I mean, we have seen in Idaho, in Texas, in Utah, their state school boards associations pushing this as model policies to them. We've also seen activist groups like GLSEN creating and pushing model school policies and lobbying at the local and the state level for these. In February 2022, some of you might remember, the Eau Claire School District did a teacher training program where they had a whole set of documents that we obtained that said that parents are not entitled to know their child's gender identity. That information must be earned. As a mother of a nine-year-old, 10-year-old, I take issue with that. That was not cool. And, but they said that their priority is supporting the student. It is to take a step back, you know, as we're talking about safety, worth remembering that educators are mandatory reporters. If someone in your school system believes that a child is not in a safe environment at home, they must report that to Child Protective Services. We all know what CPS is, right? I mean, it's like, that's, it's a hassle, no family wants to go through that. But through that process, you are entitled to a measure of due process. You are allowed to present your case, you are allowed to see what's against you, you have meetings, you have interviews. This is very different than a math teacher saying, you know what? I think Luke's Catholic. I think he's not going to be supportive of his kid. I'm going to withhold this information. Those are two very, very different things. And so, you know, for schools to be doing this unilaterally is something that's really, really frightening. As I mentioned, this, this raises a lot of significant parental rights concerns. We sued Linmar Community Schools in Iowa in 2022 over their policy. The policy that they had on the books said that beginning in seventh grade on, it is, it was a child's decision whether their parents could have access to that information. And they went to great lengths, they put this information into a temporary file so that even if a parent were to pull their kid out of a district and transfer to another school, to a private school, a parent would never have access to that temporary file because under FERPA, the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, you have access to your child's permanent record, but not a temporary record. And so they were very much trying to be two-cute-by-half and really like hide this information from families. What I want to tell all of you today is there is a lot of very, very clear legal precedent that protects a parent's right to direct the care and upbringing of your children. Troxel v. Granville says that "the interest of parents in the care, custody, control of their children is perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests recognized by the Supreme Court." Pierce v. Society of Sisters, "The child is not the mere creature of the state. Those who nurture him and direct his destiny have the right, coupled with the high duty, to recognize and prepare him for additional obligations. And the liberty of parents and guardians includes the right to direct the upbringing and education of children under their control." And also Meyer v. Nebraska, "The liberty protected by the Fourteenth Amendment includes the right of parents to establish a home and bring up children and to control the education of their own." I mean, like to, like, I feel like my job is kind of translating lawyer into English. And, I mean, let's take a step back, you know, we as parents, like, I have to sign a permission slip for my child to have bug spray, sunscreen, to go on field trips. You know, this is something that we as parents are used to signing off on everything. Yet now we have districts that are really taking, you know, they're intervening, these social interventions, these medical interventions, in some cases, I mean, school-based health centers referring kids to clinics and therapists without parental, parental knowledge. These are really major interventions that schools are doing without families knowing. And so, you know, taking a step back, what does this mean for school systems? You know, you're all in positions of governance, trust. I mean, we have seen over the past four or five years, consumers, families' trust in the public school system has crumbled. And if we ever want to get back to a place where there is a constructive relationship, this lying, this hiding secrets has to end. And so that, to me, is, I think, that's kind of an overview of like what's going on and why this matters so much.
Yeah, thanks, Nikki. That's a really great, great overview of the issue. Tammy, let's, let's kick it over to you. So you had an experience with one of these policies. Can you just sort of tell us what happened to you and your daughter?
Okay, so in late 2020, my daughter was experiencing some pretty severe depression and anxiety. She had come to me at the beginning of her sixth grade year and asked if we, if, if I could find somebody for her to speak with. I had some difficulty finding somebody. It was during COVID. The places that I reached out to, they weren't accepting clients, there was too big of a need and not enough providers. She was in the Kettle Marine School District. I reached out to the counselor at that district, and I explained to them what was going on, that my daughter was having some struggles. I asked if there was a co-op program or anybody that they could refer me to. They said they would go ahead and start to work on that, and they did. They did go ahead and work on that. There was a bit of a delay just because of the need. During that delay, my daughter did start to spiral mentally further into depression and anxiety turned into thoughts of self-harm and suicide and believing that she maybe was not a girl. She had confided in a friend at school, telling the friend that she felt maybe she wasn't a girl. That friend then went to a teacher's aide at school and informed the teacher's aide how my daughter was feeling, and that staff member came up to her after school and said, you know, I heard that you weren't really feeling comfortable, you didn't feel like you were a girl, you could go to the office and fill out some paperwork, and you could change your name and gender at school, we could just go there and take care of it today. My daughter said, you know, I really can't do that, my mother would not be okay with that. At that point, the staff member said, well, then I encourage you to go home and talk to your mom about it. She did come home to me that day and expressed to me how poor she was feeling, and she requested to go to inpatient care. I immediately said I would absolutely do that for you. I reached out to a local facility. I was very transparent with them as well, letting them know what was going on with my daughter, how she was feeling. They said they would accept her. I then reached out to the school district and signed all the release forms so that Kettle Marine School District and I, we could all work together. For when my daughter returned to school, we were all on the same page on how to best assist her. The moment I walked into the facility, they affirmed my daughter. They'd never referred to my daughter as her birth name or her birth gender. She was affirmed immediately. She was in the program for about eight days. Upon release, she did reach out to that school district and ask them when she returned to school, if she could use her preferred name and pronouns. The counselor reached out to me. I said, you know, at this point, I, this is new to me, I really don't know how to navigate this. At this point, I will say yes, I will go ahead and say yes, I don't want my daughter to feel unsupported. She's going to be out of school for the next three weeks for outpatient care, and I will take my time and research this topic, and I will touch base with you before she returns to school to let you know our final decision. In that time, I did my research. I will be completely frank with you, I was devastated at the things that were happening across the country to young children making decisions that they are not capable making. The deceit that was going on between the parents in the school district, the secrets that we're keeping. So my husband and I made the decision that we were not going to affirm our daughter. There is a longstanding practice of wait and see that was clearly established long before the affirmative care model, and that was what we wanted to practice. I reached out to the school district and made them aware of that. The principal informed me that there were some staff members that wanted to support my daughter. And I said, well, I appreciate that they would like to support my daughter, my expectation is that they follow my lead. I am going to make the medical decisions for my child, and she will go back to school with her birth name and her birth gender until there is a actual professional that can assess what's really going on with her. I'm not making any rash decisions. At that point, they asked if they could call me back, and the principal went back to administration. The next day, I receive a call, and they informed me that schools are an advocate of the child and not of the parent, and should my daughter return back to the Kettle Marine School District, she would do so using whatever name and pronouns she preferred because they had a policy that allowed nicknames. I very frankly told the principal on that call that you do not get to decide the perception of what's going on in my daughter's mind. We are both well aware that she is not making up a nickname. I am not going to let her return to school using her preferred name and gender. I do not think that's the best thing for her medically. We had to agree to disagree. I immediately pulled my daughter out of the school district, and I did go ahead and seek legal action. I tried to find somebody that would assist me because there was no way that I was going to let any other parent in this district or child deal with what I did within that district. I was lucky and fortunate enough to find Will. I spoke to Luke. Luke agreed to take the case, and in October of 2023, we did win that case, that it was in, in our favor that the school district did violate my parental rights by choosing to socially transition my daughter against my wishes. And the Kettle Marine School District that I know of is the only one in the state that now is legally required to defer the decisions to the parents, and they cannot make those decisions against the parent's wishes.
Thanks, Tammy, for sharing that story. So tell us just a little bit about where your daughter is doing now and sort of what happened after you pulled her out of, out of, out of school? Was she angry at you? Sort of what, what happened after you pulled her?
Well, after I pulled my daughter off, out of school, she, she hated me, I will be frank. She was told by the medical professionals at the care facility that I was going to be her biggest adversary, and I would never accept her for who she was. The school district, they did not encourage my daughter. Only one staff member encouraged my daughter in this. I will state that clearly because I do not want to throw any shade on the Kettle Marine School District. Every staff member that I dealt with was very polite and professional with me. I could tell that they were not comfortable making the decision that they had to make. But she is doing absolutely fine. She has desisted about three weeks after removing from, I did remove her from social media, I took out outside influences, I really, really just tightened her circle when she was going through her struggles. About three weeks later, she came to me and did share with me that affirmative care really messed her up because all the professionals that were assisting her were telling her that me trying to slow the process down and just for her to take a deep breath before making any serious decisions, I was her enemy. But she is happy and healthy now, she has desisted, she's completely comfortable with her body, she is very happy that I decided to just take a pause and like, let's not rush into anything. And she does occasionally speak to me or speak with me on these issues in public forums for people, you know, to be aware that you don't need to affirm your child immediately right away. It's okay to have your child take a moment and just think about the decisions that they're making. Children are not taught every day, for whatever reason, in our society, that, you know, growing up is hard. You're going to feel uncomfortable in your body, you're going to hate yourself some days, that's never going to go away, even in adulthood, and you just need to learn how to process those feelings and work through it. You can't run away from those bad feelings. But she's doing phenomenally.
Where do you, where do you think she would be if you hadn't slowed the process down?
I honestly do not think my daughter would be with me today if I hadn't slowed the process down. She had made a promise to herself that if transitioning did not help with her mental health, that she was going to end her life.
Thanks for sharing that. Dr. Anderson, you're a practicing mental health professional who's worked in this area for a super long time, so can you just give us your take on this issue and these policies?
Sure. First of all, thank you, thank you for sharing your story. It was a pleasure to behind-the-scenes work with you.
Yeah.
So I want to say a couple preliminary things, if I could, just to lead into that. So I'm a psychologist for 46 years, clinical psychologist, and I've worked with many, many kids and families over a long career, done a lot of different things. I'm also a parent. And so I come at this from that perspective. And although I wouldn't necessarily likely agree with all of you in the room about every subject matter, I do agree with you that parents are in the best position to judge what's necessary for their children. And our lawyers in the room can argue, I think effectively, that it's their legal right to assert with schools. So it's been, it's been a privilege for me to come to this. Luke was actually the first attorney who approached me about this subject matter, although I've subsequently gotten involved in other issues and other matters. And I've been hearing, I had been hearing from parents for some time at that point in my work that they were concerned about the ideological capture, not only of some teachers, but also some clinicians. And I had been speaking out about my concerns about this really as long ago as six years ago in The Washington Post and a big Splash Atlantic article where I characterized myself as the naysayer at my university-affiliated gender clinic, someone who was calling into question the prevailing logic that, you know, kids know who they are and you should just let them be who they are. That wasn't my experience as a psychologist. It was my experience that there were many kids who were questioning their gender and even troubled by it, and what they needed was our help to figure it out. So that's what I've been doing all these years. In truth, Luke had already cobbled together the basis of my subsequent affidavit. Thank you, Luke, for that. And when we spoke, I realized I did have a lot to say about this matter and was happy to sign on as, as an expert witness. And as everyone in the room knows, we won. If you read the judge's ruling, three or four pages of his ruling are quoting me, so maybe I was persuasive. And I would say to you, all of you who are devoted to parent rights, it's not just the legal matters, but it's the, it's the psychological factors that are also at play here and really, really important. And I believe that the judges will be swayed by the legal argument combined with the scientific evidence about what we know about such kids and what to, how to effectively help them. Concurrent with the matter, as it was proceeding here in Wisconsin, I was signed on as an expert witness on a, a legal matter in a school district in California, which we also won. Again, the judge citing, citing for three or four pages, my expert witness affidavit as justification for why it makes no sense. In fact, it's harmful to have these secrecy policies in school districts and to keep important information about the health and well-being of children from their own parents. The very premise upon which such policies are built, namely that such policies are good for kids, is demonstrably false. No professional society, no professional society of which I am aware has endorsed parent secrecy policies. Activists have, ideologically driven people have, with the expectation that they're going to save a couple of kids from abusive parents. And as Nicole points out, everywhere in the United States, we have mandatory reporting laws so that educators are required to involve authorities when there is any suspicion. As an educator, you don't have to prove, as a psychologist, I don't have to prove abuse, I just have to be worried about it, seriously worried about it, and then the authorities get involved and do an investigation, which is horrible, maybe, but also it reveals our bias as a society, the safeguarding of children. In the United Kingdom, last week, a major report was released which is having international repercussions, so-called CAS Commission report. And if you know anything about it, you should read it. There is a whole section on social transition in there. The CAS Commission conducted about 11 systematic evidence reviews. They, they reviewed policies in 15 other countries. They reviewed all clinical guidelines having to do with transgender care, and they came to the conclusion that social transition of children is not justified by evidence, scientific evidence, and that it should be done only very cautiously and only, only, only with parents, never without parents. So I'm very gratified to see that full report, which is a major, major thing. I had a lot of interaction with Hillary Cass, Dr. Cass, in the last couple of years and found that our viewpoints aligned quite, quite well. So, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do an uncharacteristic Midwestern thing, and I'm gonna brag. I feel vindicated because I've been saying this for years. I've been writing it for years, and I've taken a lot of grief for it. I've been vilified by some professional organizations, certainly by a lot of ideologically captured, captured activists. So I'm happy to put up my credentials against theirs, and if you do so, I think you'll agree, I'm qualified to have the opinions that I do, and I argue them using the best evidence available. It's my pleasure to be here to help you safeguard children.
Dr. Anderson, quick follow-up for you. Something that parents are often told, and I think even Tammy was told, maybe by the, the medical professionals, is this sort of threat of suicide. It's worded in terms of, would you rather have a, a live son or a dead daughter? Do you have a reaction to that, or can you respond to that?
I've always taken strenuous exception to that, and I think it's, it's at best misguided parroting of a mantra, and it's not supported by the evidence. One of the 11 systematic evidence reviews that CAS Commission did was this very subject of self-harm and suicide. There was an important study coming out of Finland. I know the doctor who did it, she's in charge of gender medicine for the country of Finland, that's a very progressive country, and this study demonstrated, because they studied, they studied all the kids who had gone through the gender clinics over 15 years in Finland. They have the ability to do that because they have a national health plan and a national system of collecting data. The rate of suicide of the kids who went through gender clinics did not go down, regrettably. It resembled the rate of suicide of other adolescents who had serious psychological issues. So we have a clear indication, and there's some other research that supports that conclusion, we have a clear indication that this is a misstatement or maybe blackmail to try to persuade parents to do what the person who's using that lie to, wants them to do. And I, I think there are going to be, there are already some lawsuits, but there are going to be more lawsuits aimed at people who repeat such lies. There are a number of mantras and lies like that, but that's the most inflammatory one.
Yeah, you mentioned litigation, Nikki. There's been some lawsuits over the policy, these policies, we've talked about a few of them. Can you just kind of give us an overview of the, of the state of the litigation over these policies?
Yeah, it's interesting because it's pretty mixed, quite honestly, even though, as I said, I, I believe and my lawyers believe that there is a very clear legal right, parental right, liberty interest in this. There are kind of four buckets of litigation that are going right now. The first is parent versus district on notification. So these have been largely families where their child has been transitioned behind their back, the parent has found out, sued the district. There's one in Florida, January Littlejohn, who some of you might know, she sued her district in Leon County. That was dismissed in the district court, and it's currently pending appeal in the 11th Circuit. There's also one in Massachusetts, Foot v. Ludlow. DMAS ruled actually in favor of the school and found that the district's policy of parental exclusion was flawed and disconcerting, and that students and parents would almost certainly be better served by a different approach, but that its actions didn't violate the Constitution. This has been appealed to the First Circuit. Those of you who know anything about the federal, the federal courts, obviously, the courts in Massachusetts are a little bit more liberal than they are in Florida, and so I think we're likely probably honestly to see very different decisions than that. And when that happens, it's what's called a circuit split. This is something that frankly will end up having to be resolved by the Supreme Court, but I don't think anytime soon. And so we're just kind of watching all these sort of burble up. There's also one recently that was in Maryland, John and Jane Parent versus Montgomery County Board of Education. This was dismissed, but on standing grounds, they said that parents didn't have the right to challenge the policy because their kids weren't affected, and so that was kind of more of like a procedural thing. Another kind of bucket is teachers suing districts that are forcing them to hide these secrets. This is, this came up most recently in California. California being a state where all districts must hide the parent, the gender identity. So two teachers represented by the Thomas More Law Society sued their district in the state of California, saying, we don't really want to keep secrets from the families. Those parents actually, or those teachers actually won, they got a preliminary injunction. I think the state is planning on, like, they're going to appeal that, so that's still kind of working its way through the system. There have also been a couple instances where districts have put in place parental notification policies, some in California, some in New Jersey, again, kind of like thumbing their, their nose at state law. In California, Chino Valley put one of those policies in place, and then they were sued by the Attorney General. Same thing happened in Maryland, no, in, in New Jersey, where four districts put in place parental notification policy, saying, no, it is our policy as districts that we will tell parents if a child is going to do this. And that AG also has gone after them, and so those are kind of working their way through the courts. And then sort of the backdrop for all of this is something where that is, this happened in Virginia, but it happened, it started in 2017, 2018, Gavin Graham versus Gloucester. And this is something where a T, a student felt that, a student was not able to use the bathrooms, the locker room of the student's preferred gender identity, was denied that accommodation, and it kind of bounced up and down for the courts for like years and years, the kid graduated. But eventually, the Fourth Circuit decided that Title IX and Fourteenth Amendment violations took place because the student faced emotional harm from using the restroom assigned to the student's biological sex, and the Supreme Court declined to take that up. That was in 2020. And so that's kind of the backdrop against which all of you are operating, which is to say, if we were Facebook status, it's complicated. And so that makes things very, very messy because there's a lot of like just crossing legal precedent, none of which is really even, like, some of which kind of touches on here, and so that's not very good or very easy and straightforward for you, so sorry.
It's complicated. Consult a lawyer is the, is the, is the bottom line. Dr. Anderson, back to you. You touched on this a little bit before, but there's been quite a lot of change happening recently in Europe. Can you just sort of talk about globally how the mental health community is thinking about this issue, and where does the United States sort of fall on the spectrum of that?
So Europe is getting it right. They've done systematic evidence reviews, and their best scientists have studied these issues, including the recent CAS Commission. And they've all concurred that the evidence, systematic evidence as reviewed is insufficient to justify medicalization of minors, and, and, and also that they're going to be very cautious, extremely cautious in offering interventions that are, that cause irreversible changes, life, life changes. I've been traveling to Europe, actually, for the last 10 years, and in the last couple of years I've been there. of years, I've been there a number of times, meeting with some of the people who are my counterparts in Europe. And we all agree. So I say sometimes I'm more comfortable in Europe than I am in the United States and in professional circles because they're really looking at the evidence. They're, they're trying to understand the need. We're all seeing the same thing, which is a huge increase in the numbers of kids who are asserting a sexual or gender minority label. All the big surveys in the US have shown this, Gallup, HERS, CDC, Williams Institute, and so on. And, and we're being asked what to do about it. One mistake that a lot of people are making is assuming that all of these kids are transgender kids. No, they're not. They're a heterogeneous group that are gender questioning or asserting something. And getting to the bottom of what's going on with individual children is all important. So I've been a huge advocate, surprise, surprise, as a psychologist, of evaluating every child and trying to determine what's best for them. And that's a big, a big recommendation of the, of the CAS Commission is individualized evaluation before any intervention, including social transition. By the way, I've been fighting people in the US about this. You know, some people say, well, it's not a medical intervention, so why should a kid or family seek professional guidance, such as you, for making a decision like that? Can't they just make their best decision? Well, they can. But now with experts having looked at it, we think it's probably a good idea. Usually it's a sign that something's going on with your child. The vast majority of such children have other things going on with them, depression, anxiety, and so on. And we should know about that. And we don't just default to treating gender as a siloed problem. We need to think holistically about, about the children. So there's a huge difference. Same difference is, exists between Canada and Europe. Canada is sort of fighting tooth and nail to, in some circles, to keep the very advocate oriented approach to gender with kids, with youth. And I'm an occasional consultant there as well, with a couple of provinces who are trying to introduce more reasonable approaches to these issues.
One of the, one of the arguments that we hear and that school board members will hear if they, you know, try to develop a policy on this topic is, you know, this is just a nickname, what's the big deal? You know, why shouldn't we just respect a nickname just like we do other nicknames? So Tammy, maybe you could take that first and then back to you, Dr. Anderson. How would you respond to that, given your, what happened with your daughter? Was it, was it a big deal for your daughter or was it no big deal for her?
It was a huge deal for my daughter. From my experience with my daughter, she wanted to be anybody else but herself. She really, really was at a place where she hated herself. You have to understand, it was during COVID, she was very isolated. She didn't have a lot of people in her corner, as most children didn't at that point, to like encourage them and lift them up. They were isolated at home. She was not just picking up a quick name and going on with her life. She was creating a whole new person. She wanted a different name. She wanted a different gender. She wanted to be, present herself differently. It was creating an entirely new identity. It's not just a nickname. That is not the way that these children look at it. Your district could tell you that that's a policy that they use to let your child transition at school, push back against that. You have every right to do that. You have parental authority to do that. It is not a school district's place to decide any sort of medical care for your child. That is strictly falls to the parent, frankly, because at the end of the day, it's your responsibility to deal with any of those regrets. Those regrets should not be put on staff or administrators within a school district. And the way the policies are written right now, those are being put on staff and school district members. And from my experience, a large portion of staff members and administration are not comfortable following the policies that are being handed down.
How about you, Dr. Anderson, from a clinical perspective? How would you respond to that argument?
I think reasonable people can disagree, but probably few of us would say that the average teacher in public school is qualified to diagnose gender dysphoria. And if they're not, then what business would they have affirming an identity completely different than the, the one that everyone else knows the child by? So, so I've been making the case that school's not the proper place for that kind of evaluation and really should be done by the appropriate professional. My colleagues in Europe totally agree. That's why I'm kind of in spirit, a European. Teachers have so much to do these days. I mean, after all, we just went through this horrible social experiment, which is a flop of isolation from school during COVID. And the kids are behind, teachers are scrambling to keep up and we keep loading them on, loading them up with tasks to do, which they're not, they're not equipped to do, frankly, as, as loving as, as most teachers are, as very competent as they are. And what I've been arguing, I think, is that this whole notion of parent secrecy policies creates not only a rift in the family, but creates a rift between teachers and parents, which we dare not really tolerate because historically, the hallmark of public education has been partnership between parents and, and teachers. And you don't want to mess with that.
Amen, amen. Nikki, over to you. So another argument that we often hear that lawyers will assert is that Title IX requires this. So I know there's a new rule coming, we'll get to that, but how about currently under Title IX? Is that true? Does Title IX require schools to hide things from parents?
You might be surprised, but districts and states and the federal government are trying to have their cake and eat it too. So right after President Biden took office, they issued an executive order, 13988, Executive Order on Preventing and Combating Discrimination on the Basis of Gender Identity or Sexual Orientation. So it took a Supreme Court decision, Bostock v. Clayton County, which said that you can't discriminate against your employees on the basis of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expanded that to all other spheres, including education. Which is interesting because the Supreme Court actually, in their Bostock decision, went out of its way to say, this does not apply to other federal or state laws that prohibit sex discrimination. And so this, this is the Biden people kind of picking and choosing and cherry picking. So this, and they had, they had made very clear that their plans to unwind Betsy DeVos' Title IX laws that she put in place in 2020. So kind of as part of this whole gender discrimination project that they're working on, they rolled out EEOC orders. I mean, obviously with many of you, you know, being school board members, you also have employees that might be facing some of these issues. And so there's kind of the student aspect of it, there's the employee aspect of this. And DOJ and the Education Department started to put out fact sheets advising schools on what to do about this, you know, how to participate, like sports participation, names, et cetera. And so this is, this is all happening in June 2021, like right after they take office. And so everybody's like, okay, we, we have to do, ooh, romantic. So this, so everybody's like, we have to do this, all right? Our school's gonna be back in session. We have, we have to do all these things. At the end of, in August 2021, 20 states sued the Education Department, saying that they don't have to, are we cool with the dark?
I, we'll just keep going. I don't know, somebody's working on it, I think, so.
So 20 states sued the Education Department over this, saying, asking for preliminary injunction, saying, this is nonsense, we don't want this. The 20 states, does not include Wisconsin, sorry guys, but they're saying, you know, we don't think this is constitutional, we think there are real administrative procedure act problems. And the, the district ends up, or the 20 states end up getting an injunction. And so what's interesting is, like, I actually was looking this up last night, I was like, why has this not been resolved yet? Because in 2022, the Eastern District of Tennessee grants the injunction and says, you know, you guys don't have to go ahead with this. And it hasn't moved anywhere since. And so the, it's in the Sixth Circuit, there was an argument in April 23, where the, the federal government is arguing against those states, saying, no, 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 you have to do this thing, except DOJ's argument in this is, the interpretation of the, of the guidance documents aren't, it can't be, you shouldn't have given the injunction because it's just guidance. And the judge in the Sixth Circuit, Judge Joan Larson, is like, well, if it's just guidance and it doesn't mean anything, then why did you put it out in the first place? And so I think this is fascinating, right? For like the Education Department to be like, wink, wink, na, na, do these things or else it's coming down the pike. And then to say like, hey, but you don't have to do it, is like, again, they're trying to have their cake and eat it too. TLDR, we are interpreting it as no one in the country. If DOJ came out flat out and said it's non-binding, y'all, it's non-binding. Okay? So they're also, I mean, separate from those 20 states, Texas also has its own thing. So with, I guess we're gonna get into like where Title IX stands, but as of right now, like the rule, the final rule has not come out. As of yesterday, the Education Department canceled their last couple of meetings with OIRA, the Office of Information Regulatory Affairs, which is like their, which means that they're finalizing the rule. They had this rule that came out, or that, yeah, they released the first iteration of it in 2022, the athletics part in 2023. They accepted over 250,000 comments from the members of the public, saying, dear God, don't do this to our children. Sex does not equal sexual orientation, gender identity. If you're gonna do it, do it through an act of Congress. You can't update a law from 1972, just through like waving your wand, putting on a phone, you know, Obama style. And so that rule has not come out yet. And so with that in mind, it will probably come out within the next 45 days, kind of counting back from the, from where the, from the election date, May 21st, May 21st is the drop dead date when the rule has to come out. And so when that happens, there will be a lot of litigation. And it's gonna, at that point, be a race to the nationwide injunction. But even thinking back to 2020, when Betsy's rule came out, that was, I mean, May 2020, the world was shut down. There were no COVID vaccines, there was not a single human being with a pulse on a school campus in America. And every single Title IX officer, every single school administrator was like wringing their hands, saying, there's no way we can comply with this in 10 weeks. There was no one who was being raped. There was no one who was being harassed on campuses. Like, what do you mean? You knew this was gonna happen. You sort of, you read the proposed rule, you sort of knew the direction this is going. And now we're watching organizations like ATICS, the Association Title IX Officers, falling over in the cell, saying, hey, this is coming, here's how you update all your policies. And so you can kind of watch where the temperature and where school administrators, where they want this to go versus where they are legally obliged to go. And so know that you are on solid legal standing. If the Department of Justice says this is not enforceable, then it is not enforceable.
So the, the new rule, we don't know what it's exactly gonna say, but we've seen the proposed rule. Does the, does the text of the proposed rule say anything explicit about the parental notice and consent over gender transitions? Does it address that issue directly in the text?
Yeah, and so you, you guys might have seen in the news that there, the Biden people have said they're gonna bifurcate this, they're gonna release the athletics part after the election, which is, I think, you know, again, kind of disingenuous because it's impossible to overlay sexual orientation and gender identity into this law without impacting athletics in whatever way. And so I think, you know, with that, there is, you know, I think the parental exclusion is kind of the biggest concern because schools then can strip the parental prerogative about, I don't want my child to go by that name, I don't want my child to stay in that cabin when they go on the overnight field trip, where if they start to defer to the children on that over parents. And, you know, there are major, there are significant speech concerns over this as well, again, with the compelled speech accept element. The proposed rule defined actionable harassment in a way where it's, there is in place a Supreme Court decision called Davis v. Monroe County, this is from 1999, that says that harassment has to be so severe, pervasive, and objectionably offensive that it interferes with a student's educational, educational experience. Never in my life would I have thought that one word would be so important, but the Biden people and also the Obama people had interpreted, they had changed that and to or. And so when you go from severe, pervasive, and objectionally offensive, which is, you know, kind of a totality of events, a really hostile environment, to severe, pervasive, or, then suddenly it can be one time. Suddenly it's you say one thing. And so humor, satire, parody, I'm religious, you know, all of those things, suddenly a one-off example can be a reason that a student can claim that they have been discriminated on the basis of their gender identity and sexual orientation. And boom, then the kid is caught. And so that really sweeps in a huge amount of protected speech, which is something that's concerning, the misgendering, the pronouns, the names, the all that. And then again, the athletics thing, I just very much keep on your guard because they're going to say that it, like, we're gonna punt this till later. There is no way that they can actually, in real life. And it's going to put, frankly, you guys are gonna be on the front line of this because even in their proposed rule about the athletics part of it, it was like, okay, well, it's kind of age dependent and it's kind of like what the sport is. And so if it's a bunch of kindergartners, you know, doing, like playing soccer, that's one thing, but it's a bunch of high schoolers playing lacrosse, that's another thing. But you do the wrong thing and wouldn't that suck to have a Ten Line investigation that would subject you to the death penalty? Don't do the wrong thing! And, right, I mean, you guys can read between the lines. No one is really interested in having this like drawn out multi-year federal process that would, would subject you to possibly losing all federal funds. And so it's obviously just easier and they know that it's logical for elected officials just to say, you know what, the easy thing is just to fold to DOJ. And so this is them trying to compel without compelling. And that, in my mind, is absolute nonsense.
Yeah, so the new rule is gonna change a lot. And what you need to sort of know at this point is there's gonna be a whole lot of litigation over it. And so there's a good chance that the rule could get enjoined and so you sort of need to follow that litigation to wait and see. And then the other aspect with respect to this parental notification, at least my read of it, is it just doesn't address it clearly. It does, there's nothing in the text that says schools have to hide things from parents. There's nothing that addresses the parental notice piece of it. Undoubtedly, some people will argue that it requires that, but that's gonna have to get litigated, so.
And I think there are two other policies that the Education Department was advancing kind of at the same time, both of which sort of went under the radar. One is the civil rights data collection. Every two years, schools have to report data to the federal government on violence, things like that. One of the things when they proposed updating CRDC in 2021 was to create a new category for student data that was being sent to the department of updating it from male and female to male, female, non-binary. And so that would then give them kind of the purview to collect that information going down as young as kindergarten if children are non-binary. My five-year-old, when my, when my kids were five, did not think about whether they were binary. So that's, you know, that's one aspect of it. But that was a data collection thing. The big kind of sound and fury about the civil rights data collection stuff they wanted to update was that they also wanted to stop collecting teacher on student sexual assault information, which, like, why would anybody want that data? So that, that caught a lot of information. No one really paid attention to this categorization part. The other thing where they were doing meetings on, but they didn't actually do a whole proposed rule, whether they're gonna change it, is FERPA. But they were looking at changing what privacy rights are. Because FERPA is generally, I mean, and you guys generally know what FERPA is, right? It's to protect like districts handing out kids' social security numbers, like, like personally identifiable information. We have seen some districts interpret FERPA as that students have privacy rights from their parents. That is something that is really worrisome and that's something else that I am frightened might end up being looped into this regulation as well. And so just pay attention to that because minor children should not have privacy rights from their parent. And I think, you know, we have seen people who have speculated, this is kind of the UN rights of the child thing versus the rights of the family. So I think there are larger battles at play here, but like children should not have rights in their parent. Your parents are there to protect you.
Yeah, so that kind of brings my next question. One of the last justifications you hear for the policy of hiding this from parents is, well, you know, some parents might not be accepting of their own child's identity and we need to protect those children from their own parents. So I was hoping just all of you could react to that because I think that's kind of the, the heart of what motivates these policies. So maybe Tammy, you can go first and then Erica second and then Nikki last.
I would say I completely disagree with that sentiment. The vast majority of the parents that I see in this fight are genuinely loving and caring parents and really just want what is best for their child. They just don't want to be excluded from those decision-making conversations, nor do they want the mentors that they're allowing in their children's lives or the medical professionals they're allowing in their children's lives to make their child feel empowered to keep that secret from their family. It's super important that the basis of a child's life is their parents because who is going to be there for that child after their education ends? It most certainly is not gonna be any of the board members in this room that's going to be there for my daughter when she turns 17 or 18 and graduates from high school. It is my responsibility and obligation to ensure that I am raising my child to the best of my ability. And the only way that I can do that is if I can work alongside the medical professionals and the educators that have time with my child. So to come from a stance assuming that parents are bad actors when they have not displayed that to you, that really hinders a child's ability to foster a safe and loving environment within the community and their own home, if that's what they're being taught by their educational professionals.
To piggyback on you, because we do agree, I think substantially. So one of the rhetorical questions I've asked in this conversation sometimes about these secrecy policies is, okay, so school district A, you have this policy, you're gonna quote, protect these children from their potentially abusive parents. Where's the off-ramp? Where's the off-ramp? What do you do, you do this for a while. I have over and over and over again seen carnage, harm to children done by perpetuating this double life where the children are essentially tacitly encouraged to lie to their parents. That does not lead to a good place. Okay? And as much as I support teachers and schools for helping kids, where are these kids in the summer, when the school year ends? Where are these kids when they're 17, 18? So I just think it's impossible to justify long-term. And I argued that I don't think it's, it's appropriate short-term for a lot of reasons. I also, like Tammy, believe that most, most parents, the overwhelming majority of parents only want what's best for their children. How can we deprive them of weighing in on what's best for their own children? And what gives a school district the... And what gives a school district the justification for thinking that the judgment by a teacher who has known this child for a short period of time is to be, is to supplant the judgment of parents who biologically and in-law are charged with the health and well-being of their children?
Yeah, back to you, Nikki. How would you respond to that argument from a legal perspective?
I mean, obviously, my panelists are correct. No, you know, I think the vast majority of parents are loving, are supportive, and certainly there are cases when families are not. This is not to discount or say that that doesn't exist, but also, we don't make policies based on those exceptions. You know, the fact is, is that you have, right now, taxpayer-funded teachers, administrators, implying, telling, teaching kids, "Your parents might not love you if." I mean, that is like, that is so, that breaks my heart, that my child might come home and think, "Mommy's a Catholic. She's not going to love me if I do something." You know, to put those conditions on, because that is, at the end of the day, fundamentally destroying, undermining that parent-child relationship. As you said, I mean, who is going to be there for your child when they are 22, crying on the bathroom floor? It sure as heck not going to be a superintendent, right? I mean, and so like, where do you come back from? How do you rebuild that? And I, when we talk to parents whose kids have gone through similar issues, it's interesting, because when we talk about, you know, litigation, in most cases, the parents, you know, their reason, one of the reasons that we're structured as a membership association and our plaintiffs are anonymous, is their first care, their first thought is, and always should be, repairing that relationship with their child, which is so frayed and so tenuous. And, you know, I would never force someone into litigation if I thought that it would irreparably harm or damage that. And yet, we have schools doing that with our tax dollars, and so it's, I think it's unconscionable.
All right, so. Last question for all of you, very open-ended. We have a room full of school board members that is giving you their full attention, so is there any kind of final message you want to leave them with that you want to say about this topic? So anybody that wants to can go first. You go ahead, Nikki.
I'm like blanking right now. I mean, thank you guys for caring about this. This is, like, just looking at kind of the tips that we have received of parents defending education over the past, like, three years, this has been the majority of it. I mean, all of last year, all of this year, this is front of mind, because it permeates everything. It permeates curriculum, it permeates field trips, sporting events. Yeah, I mean, watching kids be suspended for having T-shirts saying, "There are only two genders." Like, this is an issue that is not going away, and so it is going to continue to be something that is burning white-hot. But no, I mean, we have done polling across this issue, you know, like, concerns about this span racial lines, span political lines, because parents do love their children, and they are really deeply distressed that there are people who are trying to take their children away from them, and tell them that they're bad parents. And so, you know, you are, even though it is hard, and there will be people who will stand up at your school board meetings and scream at you, know that the vast majority of Americans are on your side in this.
I would leave you with this. You all are in a very powerful position. You can decide to make a policy to always defer issues like this to the parents and not cut them out. You're not only protecting the children and the families in your community, but you're also protecting your staff from having to follow practices that they might not agree with. A large portion of teachers and educators wrapped up in this, as well as administrators, do not believe in the practice of affirming children. But are they going to do that if their benefits are on the line, and they're not going to be able to support their family or provide housing for their children? They absolutely will. And that's nothing against any educator who does that. The board is in a particular predicament where they can make that ruling and ensure that not only are community members protected, their staff members are protected as well. You guys can work together. If you find a child and a family that supports affirmative care, you can make the choice to support that, but it should always be deferred to the parents. You should not put staff members in a difficult situation where they have to deliver to a family, "We are going to disregard the medical care you want for your child, and we are going to let your very distressed, potentially mentally ill child make a very serious decision" and cut you out of the loop. I would encourage you to put this on your board meetings every month, to come to a decision, to make that policy, to always defer to the parents. That would be my suggestion.
In a long career, as you've heard, as a psychologist, I've always been intent on driving information gathering and discussion towards consensus. What do we know about a child? What do we know about a child's needs right now? And can we all agree what those are? My concern about these policies, among others, is that it drives division, and it works against finding consensus, because information isn't being shared. So if we share all the same information, teachers, parents, clinicians, kids even, then we have a basis to talk about, okay, now what do we do about it? But if we're keeping siloed information, that's not going to help us to drive towards